Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the Town of Acton Planning Board meeting for April 15 to order at 6:03. And first off, we'll review the minutes so we can approve the minutes for the April 1st meeting. Are we missing Jim? Dennis, do you see Jim anywhere?
No, I don't see him anywhere, Chris. He was gone before I left down the fairgrounds and all that.
Right. Let me see the other page.
Maybe call and see where he is.
Okay.
If he's not there, you can ask her to call him.
I'll take care of that, Chris.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll have to designate Pat as the alternate for now until we find Jim, right?
Right.
Okay.
Has everybody gone over the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 1st.
May I get a second?
Second it.
All in favor? I got one. Yeah. Gavin approved, John approved, Pat Pearson approved, Dennis.
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. On a few floors, zoning ordinance changes. I will now kick it over to the co-
Right. Now be a permitted use. Before, these were just unapproved uses. We didn't have any verbiage at all for them.
Right.
So if there's no questions, we can go on to the fourth, which is the short-term rental units. So the page here, it shows in the land use chart are in all the districts, which to you know, review. Then on the second page, we added admission for term rental units, which is rental of a legally existing family dwelling, two days at a time. So this would, you know, be weekend rentals, week long, up to 60 days. If you're renting your place for more than 60 days at a time, this doesn't apply to you. And we came up with some performance standards, which I'll read through. So the purpose to authorize use of a legally existing, single-family dwelling for the accommodation of a short-term guests for compensation for a duration of up to 60 days. Permit required effective January 1st, 2022. No property owner shall operate a short-term rental without first obtaining an annual permit from the building department and is subject to an annual inspection. Only one short-term rental unit per lot is allowed. Application fee unfundable short-term rental fee shall accompany the application as sent by the Board of Selectmen. So, and then additional requirements. The property owner shall provide evidence of valid certificate of insurance covering short-term rental as a use. The property's 911 address, the telephone number of the property owner or agent, and the approved short-term rental permit stating the conditions of the permit shall be posted in a visible place. Three, the property owner or agent will be available within one hour of the property at all times when the unit is rented. Four, one fire extinguisher shall be accessible on every floor of the building. Five, each bedroom shall have a code-compliant egress window or equivalent. Six, code-compliant smoke slash carbon monoxide detectors must be installed, one on each level and in each bedroom, hardwired with a battery backup. And seven, a state-approved subsurface septic system shall be installed. Maximum occupancy of the unit shall be no more than four persons per bedroom count as stated on the septic plan. And operation without a permit, operating a short-term rental on or after January 1st, 2022, without obtaining the required permit is a violation of the Acton Zone ordinance. So those are the performance standards we'll be adding to the zoning ordinance. And these are, the board met with the fire chief and spent quite a bit of time two years ago looking over this. It's once again, it's a hole in the zoning ordinance where we don't have anything for rental units. And it makes sense to put these basic safety requirements into play. So I guess if there's any, any questions from the public?
I had a question in regards to the owner being within one hour. And it says the owner or agent. What if there's a caretaker on the, for the property? Is that?
That would be considered the agent.
And then one other question I had is in regards to enforcement. How is this enforced? Is there to determine whether it's rental or versus visitors, I should say?
Well, in that respect, it is up to the owner to notify the town. But, you know, there are ways that the town could find out that it was a rental property just from the neighbors or things like that. But it's encouraged that people with a rental property come to the town and get a simple permit so that we, we know about the activity.
And yeah, I understand that. But, and how much is the permit? Does that publish it or is that known?
Um, the planning board doesn't set the the cost of the permit the selectmen do, and I don't think it would, it would be an egregious amount, but you'd have to talk to the selectmen.
Thank you.
Nancy Maloney has her hand up.
Hi, thanks. I'm just wondering what this ordinance, what, what problem are we trying to fix here?
Well, we're trying to fix a hole in the zoning ordinance where we don't have any verbiage for rental units at all. And we know there are a lot of these short-term rentals in the town. And really, we'd like to make it safer for everyone. Really, those are our biggest
Yeah.
Biggest issues was that, you know, we talked to the fire chief and this, I mean, the standards we have put forth are really helpful with safety.
Yeah. I'm wondering, is this a common practice?
You're wondering how common short-term rentals are in the town of Acton?
No, I'm curious as to, is it a common practice for the town to require people who are renting their properties through Airbnb to get a permit with certain specifications?
It absolutely is in other towns. Acton just is trying to get on the bandwagon.
Ben, Ben, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll speak that a little broader perspective. I, I think that throughout the state, there are different communities that are regulating this from, from different points of view. Some communities are facing excuse me, issues with affordable housing. Rental housing being used for short-term rentals. Other communities are, especially communities with a lot of lake frontage or ocean frontage have water quality concerns from overburdening septic systems.
Yeah.
And other communities have more, I would say, kind of neighborhood quality of life kind of issues. Seeing transitions of kind of owner-occupied neighborhoods turning more into higher turnover kind of occupancy.
Yep. Is someone talking?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, I, we had some background noise. I'm not sure if they were going to be recognized or not.
I muted them temporarily.
Can I ask just one more question? May I?
Yes.
Thanks. So a while ago, about 10 years ago, when I built a camp adjacent to our house, I had to jump through many, many hoops to get the building permit and the what do you call it? The occupancy permit. I had to put in a $10,000 sprinkler system. And I'm just wondering if there's any consideration given to situations like that. And, and let me tell you what my concern is. As part of that, so I have this incredible, you know, sprinkler system, but it, what's going to go against your ordinance is that I have a bunk room that sleeps 10 people. And so I'm just concerned about having to go through all of these gyrations to get it done in the first place and then having to, I don't know, maybe it, and I wasn't planning on renting it through Airbnb. I just started doing that. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. Any thoughts?
Well, the, it's likely you had to have a sprinkler system because your property was part of a recent subdivision, sort of speak.
No, 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 it's personal property. It's personal property.
We don't require a sprinkler system in a short-term rental.
Okay, well, okay, so it was required by Ken Paul that I had to put in a sprinkler system and I did.
Okay. We don't have that in our performance standards for short-term rentals.
Right.
Is this commercial property?
Nope.
10 bedrooms.
And so I guess, so what, what's not going to comply in this situation is the bedroom because as part of the structure, it has, you know, 10 beds in one room because it's a, it's a bunk room.
Well, if you're just trying to house your family who's coming up, we're probably not too concerned. And it's unlikely you'd be renting 10 beds in one room to people, but
Yeah.
Bedroom count at four persons per bedroom.
Right, I get, I understand what you're saying. Yep. But like, for example, when I started renting it this winter, you know, a couple would rent it. But the fact remains that there are 10 beds in one bedroom. And I, I'm not expecting you to have the answer right now. I'm just saying that I'm just concerned about, about having to do quite a bit to get the permit to begin with and then not being able to get it again.
I don't think you're going to have a problem achieving a permit for this use.
Dennis?
The, the truth of the matter is, if in the ordinance it says you can't exceed over four people per bedroom, regardless how big the room is, it doesn't say what size it is. You will be limited to four people per bedroom. You can't have five, you can't have six or, or 10.
For a rental situation.
Exactly. The fact that you got a sprinkler system in there obviously is good for you guys, but that would not change the amount of money, amount of people that could be in your, in your bedroom. It's, it's going to be limited to four because that's what the ordinance says.
Yeah.
And, and the fees that the slutman would set, just like all the fees that the land use charges and stuff, that's all set by the slutman at their discretion.
What does that mean?
That means when you go up and get a building permit, what you pay for your building permit, the slutman set those fees.
Right, and yes, I paid those.
You know what I mean? So, and this here would be the same thing. It'd be completely at the discretion of the slutman what this fee would be. Example, at the slutman's meeting the other night, when somebody's renting a piece of property, apparently they charge $25 for a special permit so that renter can take his trash to the transfer station.
Yeah.
And again, that's, that's a fee that's set by the slutman for whatever reason.
Yeah, I paid that.
Yeah. So anything that's in this ordinance is, is how it's going to have to be if it passes.
Yeah. Well.
And, and just for the record, I just want to put it out there because a lot of people don't watch the regular meetings. Myself personally, I voted against putting this forward. Because, well, I don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Could I ask one more question? Are all, if it's an older property, are there septic plans? Are there some places that don't have septic plans because they're too old?
Are you talking about my, my property? No.
Uh, no, no.
Isn't it Gavin?
In, in terms of the septic, we asked that your septic be inspected by the state and the state determines if it's of, of the right level to, you know, if your septic's up to date, you're fine, but you need a state inspection.
Isn't that Gavin? Anything newer than 1980 or something is a state-approved septic design?
I think so, as long as it's functioning properly.
Right.
I guess my concern would be is i- if you purchased a property with the intent to do short-term rentals prior to this ordinance, it passed inspection when you purchased the property and now you've got to go in and put a new, a new septic in because of an ordinance coming up. That's a, that's a burden that was not planned on, I guess.
Well, it's, if your septic needs to be updated, it should be done anyway. If not, you should be fine unless you're looking to have an exorbitant people in the building. We, we're pretty generous here with four persons per bedroom. So the septic is usually determined by the number of bedrooms. So I would think you're going to be in good shape, but once again, you, you need to have your, your septic inspected.
Well, I, I guess my question would be is if, whether you have 10 people, family members in that are not paying, or you have four renters that are, shouldn't both, shouldn't they both have to be inspected even if, whether it's a rental or not?
It would certainly be a good idea, but not according to this ordinance change that we're discussing right now. You know, if you want to have a family get together at your camp, that's not what we're, we're not worried about that right now. We're just concerned about short-term rentals.
Okay, I guess I, I'll end it with this, but I guess if the concern with safety and quality, water quality, I mean, you would think the standard would apply across the board, I guess, would be if it's people, it's people. It doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter if the dollar bills move or not. And I, that, I guess that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Oh.
Yes, who are we speaking to?
Oh. Hello? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the, the Arnie name has been unmuted and I believe Arnie was trying to speak. Go ahead.
He's muted again.
Yeah, am I on now?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I would like, I got a question on this. How come that the ordinance is only for the summer people around the lake for rental and you don't care, you're not caring about the people that rent year-round, only the ones that eight, rent for eight weeks in the summertime? What about all the people that rent for 52 weeks a year? I mean, don't these, shouldn't these safety things be in all buildings? I mean, if that's the case, this just seems to be affecting the lake people because they're the ones that have the short-term rentals.
Yes, Gavin.
Okay, first I'd like to point out that this is across the board. This affects anybody doing a short-term rental in any district, whether it's village district, the rural district, or the shoreline zone. Secondly, we haven't constructed any verbiage for people who are doing long-term rentals. We're not particularly concerned about them at the moment. Our focus is short-term rentals currently. And we would like to fill all the holes in the zoning ordinance and, and come up with some verbiage for people renting 52 weeks a year, but we haven't currently done it yet.
If I could, if I could add on to what Arnie had said, if, if it's, if safety seems to be the issue, it seems like long-term would be the better place to start then, than a short-term where you're not as settled into a property.
I think one of the reasons that we've been focusing on the short-term rentals is that these people are going to be less attentive to the property. You have somebody renting the place for the entire year. They're probably going to keep it clean because they live there, they stay there, it's their home. Somebody renting, they're going to want to make the most of the weekend, bring 10 friends with them, six dogs, have more cars in the driveway. It might be more disruptive to the neighborhood. We just feel like this is a more pressing issue. And that's how we ended up there.
So I guess, is the, is the more pressing issue the, the concern with neighbors or is it safety? Because it seems like it, it seems to be moving towards more of concerns for neighbors. And in all reality, short-term rentals, I think, kind of police themselves because of, because of reviews. I mean, you if, if you don't keep up your property, you're probably not going to rent it because you're going to have if you get bad feedback, it's, it's, you're kind of done. So I think people proactively are going to try harder on a short-term rental.
Yeah, you're citing the exception of the rule. There's always going to be exceptions when people rent. But most people, when they rent, the neighbors go to the owner and say, hey, don't rent to that people again. They were terrible. And this has happened to me. I, I can tell you from experience, living on the camper road up here since 1963. And the biggest parties that have been up here have been all families. And they come up here, we have, I have a friend of mine that when his whole family's here, he got 27 members of his extended family between family, his grandkids and kids. I mean, the big groups are not rentals. They're not, you have anecdotal stories. I doubt if you have any data of written complaints from people that have gone to the town and written up a complaint.
Ben, did you have a question or a comment?
I, I think my comment was going to go back to that differentiation between a, a short-term rental, whether that happens in the summertime or whether it happens in the wintertime versus a longer-term rental, whether that's that for six months or a year or a multi-year lease. They, they are of a different character. I, I, I have seen short-term rentals regulated. Again, there is a lot of anecdotal stories out there to the earlier speaker's point from around the state and I think in other communities that have lakes, you know, it, it, the situations of, yes, if you own a camp or a, a home on a lake, you're, you're probably going to be pretty popular with your family and you may host a summer gathering or two or three gatherings a summer. A short-term rental could be anything. It could be, you know, the, the quiet couple who comes to the same place every year on an annual basis, or it could be a, a group of people, you know, getting away for the weekend and shooting fireworks week after week after week. So I, I think that those are getting towards some of the neighborhood or quality of life kind of concerns. I, I think that those are really not written into the short-term rental ordinance. The short-term rental ordinance that's being considered by the town of Acton has a, a number of standards that have to do with life safety. Those, those concerns for having someone nearby, having contact info posted and having fire extinguishers work there. And they have to do with the septic systems for the property, especially in a town that has so many lakes and water bodies, that kind of concern I think would be an important element to include in this ordinance, but it may be getting at some of those neighborhood things, but there's certainly nothing explicitly written in about quiet hours or things like fireworks or, you know, maximum occupancy of a place. Thank you.
Well, while I see him, there's a little lull here. The short-term rental came about because of a shortage of low-income housing. That's where it all started because of the people finding out that when you were able to advertise your place for rent, you can make more money. And in Biz Magazine, there's a thing on, on Munjoy Hill, how renting bi-weekly, you can make a lot more money. And what it does, it affects the, the inventory of rental things and as it, and it affects inns and stuff like that. But we don't have apartment buildings here where we have a shortage of low income or rent-controlled things. We don't have inns in this town, so I don't understand why we're concerned with the safety and the, and the things of short-term people and, and the majority of people, you're not concerned. Why isn't it rental ordinance in the, the, the town zoning? Why isn't it in the town zoning that we have rental things? Most of, and I have looked at a bunch of towns around here. Cape Elizabeth, Rockport, all those things, they emanated, they don't have anything about these, these egress and alarms because it's in the the rental housing rules of their ordinance. I mean, I think we're going back, backwards to the problem and I still don't believe like the previous, one of the previous speakers says, I don't know what the problem is. I don't know what the problem is. I don't, I don't, I still don't think there is a problem.
I would, I would like to agree with the last, the last speaker's, like, if, if shouldn't a rental ordinance encompass all rentals or none, I guess would be one of my other points.
Just for aside, too, and just on, as the, the cost is, is another big factor. When you put in, if you have to put in an egress window, that's very expensive. Because if you have to widen the window out, you're gonna take out your jack stud. And then if you take out your jack stud, you're gonna have to alter your king stud that's next to it. You have to change your header. That means the whole interior and exterior house has to be redone. As far as fire alarms, you have a fire alarm, you and what we should be doing is making sure they have, they're able to swim because according to the National Safety Council, you're more likely to die from drowning than you are in fire. So we should make sure they have a swimming license. Seeing they're renting on waterfront. Thank you.
Yes, Jim.
Yes, we're being, being, feeling new to the planning board and missing out on the early phase of the discussion and putting these proposed ordinance changes together. I'd just like to ask Dennis, Mr. Long. Dennis, when you said you were against this, were you against this as the chair of the Warrant Finance or as a, or as a planning board member moving forward? And can you tell, give me your reasons why?
It surely wasn't anything to do with the Warrant Finance Committee, Jim.
Okay, no, I didn't know whether it reached that point, you know what I mean, so.
No. Strictly the planning board, everything I say when it comes to my seat on the planning board has something to do with the planning board ordinances.
No, I respect the research you do and I, I'd just like to know why you voted against it. What your reasons were.
My reason for voting against this, and I'll compare this to the other three changes that we talked about tonight. This ordinance is unenforceable. And the reason why it's unenforceable is because you're depending on basically the honest people, which I'm not saying they aren't, that's probably the right, wrong word to use. You're planning on people coming forward to go through the permit process to be able to rent their place out for this weekend. And I feel that especially on the lakefront, we get 70, 75% of our revenues off lakefront property. It's, it's a, when you have somebody that's my age or older that has a place on the lake and they rent it out two weeks a year so they can afford to pay the taxes on that property so they can keep it. And they've owned it for 40 years, 50 years, 60 years. I know a lot of people in the last 40 years have had to sell their places on the water because they couldn't afford the taxes and a lot of these people inherited these from their fathers and grandparents and stuff like that. And I, I, I agree, I was through the whole process. I met with the, the fire marshal and the fire chief. Life safety, I appreciated all that. But also being around the town for a long time, the neighbors kind of keep on each other to regulate what goes on on their property. And my experience is that a good neighbor respects their neighbor and what their feelings are and if there's any conveniences put out there. I've worked a lot with the people around the lakes and, and they're really, very rarely do you have people that don't get along. They usually are pretty good, pretty good neighbors. And I have said from the beginning that I think we have too many restrictions in this town. And it, the septic systems, what the septic systems really have to be is a state-approved system. And I thought, and I'm not positive, it, that started around 1980 when, when we, when we redid all the systems around town. Everybody had to show that they were up to date. And in downstairs, it would be a record in the code enforcement if you have a state-approved system or not. I don't know, I just think it's a hardship that to these people that I don't think is necessary.
Good explanation. That, no, that's good. I, I appreciate that. I appreciate coming in new to this and you know, like Nancy Maloney said, you know, you hate to see these folks be penalized after already going through the process. You know, that, that's a concern of mine. It kind of, it kind of reminds me of Olive Treadwell having to, and her lady is, having to sell pieces of her, her land, pay her taxes just to hold on to it, you know, and her lady is and you know, I'm all for safety. I'm a retired firefighter, I get that, but I really appreciate, appreciate that explanation, Dennis, and it, and it makes sense, so.
I'm, I'm all, I'm all, Jim, for the people making the decision. You know, putting it forward to the people, I'm all for that.
Right, I, I, I'm not questioning that at all. I just was asking why, you know, your, your reasons why you were against it. And they make sense to me, you know, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to just thank everybody for at least listening to us and I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank everybody for listening to me.
That's, that's a hardship sometimes.
All right, moving forward, all these will come up to head on June 19th, around nine o'clock at the town meeting and you can vote on it and discuss it there. Ben, did you have something or no?
No, I, I think that the public hearing is still officially open until it's closed and I, I know that the board has already given an indication to the select board that these should be on the, on the election. So I, I'm not sure, maybe if Jennifer's still on the, on the call, she can.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
This needs a, an official vote on these individual items after the public hearing.
They've already been voted on as we understood it.
Yes, they have.
Thank you, Dennis, for answering that for me.
And they're going to be on the June town meeting, right, Jen, and not on the April?
Yes.
That was the date that Mr. Whitman gave, June 19th.
Oh, that's good.
Around nine o'clock, tentatively, it starts.
So they're gonna be on the town floor and not on the ballot, is that correct?
That is correct. Open town meeting at the Acton Fairgrounds, the 19th, starting either at nine or 10. We haven't gotten that far yet.
So the majority of the people that this will affect, a lot of majority, but a good portion of them are folks that own the camps who aren't registered voters.
Yes, sir.
They won't even have a say in the matter.
I guess if there's no more questions from the public, we should close the public hearing.
You going back to Chris now, Gavin?
Yeah, I don't see any of the comments or questions. I'm trying to scroll through here, one, one more page. Yeah, I guess we can officially close the public hearing. We do have a meeting scheduled for next week at, on the 22nd as well. Like the public to know about that as well.
You gonna vote on closing the hearing?
Yeah, could I, I'll do a roll on closing the hearing or a motion?
I'll second Gavin's motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll do a roll vote. Dennis in favor?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And then John?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing out now. Yes, Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I would request, looking at the schedule that you guys put out the other day for next week's meeting.
Yeah.
I would, I would request that the fairgrounds application be added to that. We still have a process to go through before, that'll be all approved, hopefully. To keep that moving on that project, I see we have Mr. Martel and hopefully Mr. Martinez. And the, the fairgrounds have been waiting for over a year now to get this through, so I would ask that we put that on the agenda until, if possible, until that's cleared out.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem. I don't think, I don't understand why we couldn't put it on there.
Oh, you can, you're the chair, you can put on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on for the 22nd. Thank you. You're welcome.
I'll, I'll just chime in. I think that there, there's a posting, like a notice requirement that'll have to get addressed probably as soon as tomorrow in order to facilitate that.
For the, for the fairgrounds, Ben, you mean? Okay, I'll have Jen, or talk to Jen about that posting, huh?
Ken, just a piece of clarification, there's not a public hearing of any sort for the fairgrounds, correct? Because if that's the case, we don't have time to post it. You're just putting them on the agenda as an item to discuss.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, that's all we have to discuss tonight. Your motion to close the meeting out?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Could I get a second?
Did we want to vote on the minute for us just to knock that out?
Uh, we, we did earlier.
Oh, did we?
Yeah. Didn't we?
I don't know.
I think we did, yeah, because I, you caught me halfway through it, Dennis, and so we had to do the roll vote, then I counted and I went to.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So.
I made the motion, I guess.
Can we get a second on the, the motion to adjourn? John will second it. All right, I'll do a roll. Dennis in favor? Oh.
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll see you next, uh, April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.